I called the, uh, let me wave here real quick.
Jim?
I called the March 6, 2018 Finance Committee Meeting to order. The Acting Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of claims.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we consider claims in the amount to be paid in an amount of $120,014.51. Manual checks in the amount of $102,755.25. Payroll and liabilities for 2/16 of 18 and 2/22 of 18 in the amount of $297,915.15 for a total of $520,685.32.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any other business?
No, I have nothing today.
No, sir.
Mr. Godey?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned at 6:46 PM.
Regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7 PM. And Councilmember Hancock will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and after that, Councilmember Bailey will offer an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dearest heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy living here in this wonderful city in Riverton, Wyoming. Thank you for bringing us all together to take care of the business of the city. Please bless us in all that we do tonight and have your spirit with us as we make these decisions. Please bless the law enforcement officers and the members of the military that protect us every day. And we ask all of these things in the name of your beloved Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lance Godey.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I am present and declare that we have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Communications from the floor, citizens' comments, anyone in the audience that would like to address the council regarding an item that's already on the agenda this evening will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Consent agenda, would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes February 20, 2018, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes February 20, 2018, executive session. Approval of the minutes February 27, 2018, council work session slash goal-setting meeting. Approval of the minutes March 6, 2018, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for March 6, 2018. Approval of the municipal court report for the month of February 2018. Approval of replat of Lot 2, Heritage Trail Industrial Subdivision, petitioner Source Gas.
Are there any other items that need to be discussed?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Recommendations from the Finance Committee for consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $120,014.51. Manual checks in the amount of $102,755.25. Payroll liabilities for February 16, 2018 and February 22, 2018, in the amount of $297,915.56 for a total of $520,685, $520,685.32.
Chairman, entertain a motion.
Your Honor, would it move that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we present, approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor vote signed, the motion passes. The next item this evening is Denver Air Connection Contract, Public Works Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm very pleased to report to you this evening that the FAST Committee has worked diligently with Sheridan's Cast Committee on the third year of service with Denver Air Connection. So this will be our air service for fiscal year 19, beginning July 1, 2018. And I think it's appropriate to recognize that we do have two members of our FAST Committee in the audience and again, I appreciate the efforts that they've put towards air service. Currently, the city of Riverton is under contract with Key Lime Air to provide commercial air service to Denver International Airport from Riverton Regional Airport. The upcoming contract has a number of minor changes and a few material changes. I will outline the material changes for you. First and foremost, update to block hour costs were made in this new contract. A cap on the contribution for Sheridan and Riverton were put, was put in place into this contract. A revenue sharing component was put into this contract. If the route becomes self-sustaining and a minimum revenue guarantee is not required, this clause will allow Sheridan, Riverton, and Denver Air Connection share equally the excess revenues produced by the route. The next is, part of the contract will be a marketing plan that will be submitted to Denver Air Connection 30 days prior to the first flight and quarterly updates for our marketing efforts. And then finally, we are asking the contract be proposed to be amended should Denver Air Connection or Key Lime Air change its booking engine. Currently, they utilize SkyVantage and there's a possibility that they will change their booking engine in the upcoming year. When that happens, we request that they propose an amendment to the contract with details of the transition and the different booking engine so that it can be reviewed and incorporated in the contract you're reviewing this evening. As you remember from our report, when we applied for minimum revenue guarantee funds, we're very pleased with the minimum revenue guarantee total that we have for this contract. It represents nearly a 47% drop from the minimum revenue guarantee in the contract we have this, this current year. Consequently, city staff recommends that the city of Riverton enter into agreement with Key Lime Air and also authorizes the execution of all supporting documents for this contract. I added that into the recommendation you have before you in the packet and that is because our contract references a memorandum of understanding to be included in the contract. We have this MOU in place currently. There are no changes to the MOU. And basically what it entails is Riverton and Sheridan will split equally the weekly invoices for the minimum revenue guarantee. We just wanted to update that MOU along with this contract. So therefore, again, we recommend that the city council enter into agreement with Key Lime Air and that you authorize the execution of all supporting documents, specifically this memorandum of understanding. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. The Chair would, would entertain a motion to approve the contract with Key Lime Air and all the supporting documents and authorize the mayor to sign.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Kyle, what is the main reason we have reduced our outlay in 2019? Would you refresh us one more time on that?
Absolutely, Councilman. The biggest reason is the success of the route. We're generating more revenue and we're projected to generate more revenue than we have historically. So the, the good news is we're reducing costs because people are flying out of Riverton Regional. Denver Air Connection did reduce a number of its line items in its contract. There were a few that increased due to operational costs. One, for example, is cost to operate, operate out of Riverton Regional. We waived our landing fees and terminal space fees for the first two years of the contract. For the third year, we will charge them. So their expenses increased in that line item. But most significantly is because we're performing so well and we're generating more revenues.
So we're getting more ridership.
Yes.
So we're stealing from Casper.
Your Honor, I'm not sure exactly where they're coming from, but we're doing good.
We'd like to think that they're all coming from Denver.
Yeah.
Okay?
Six hours drive, here to fly out, that's what I'm talking about.
So, anything else, council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. The next is a bid award on the East Fremont Street Waterline Replacement Project. Public Works Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is your first 1% project coming before you for the upcoming construction season. Again, this is for the East Fremont area. The project will include waterline replacement, concrete improvements, and also an asphalt overlay. City staff advertised for bids on February 14 and 21 and bids were open on May 1 with the following results. Patrick Construction with $926,750. 71 Construction at $859,740. JR Civil at $849,332.12. Rocky Mountain Sand and Gravel LLC, their bid was for 780, excuse me, $786,873.50. Dave's Asphalt Company for $753,550. Jerry Bornhof Construction for $674,032.50. And finally, Viper Underground with $679,125. We are very pleased with the amount of bidders we received on this project. As you notice in your table in the packet, we do, we did put parentheses on two of the bids. And that is because per Wyoming statute, there is a preference giving, given a 5% preference given to certified Wyoming residents. We require in our bid documents that bidders produce their certificate of residency at the time of the bid opening. Two bidders did not submit their certificate of residency and therefore we added a 5% increase to their bid. One was Jerry Bornhof Construction. From his submitted bid or their submitted bid, they were the apparent low bidder. However, without that certificate of residency, 5% was added to their bid and therefore Viper Underground was made the low bidder. In light of this preference for Wyoming bidders and those who submitted their certificate of residency, city staff recommends the city council awards the project to Viper Underground in the amount of $679,125. There's, there is currently enough funds in the 1% fund and we're pleased to report that staff's estimate for the project was $742,025. Therefore, this came in under what our projected estimate was. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the bid award for the East Fremont Waterline Replacement Project to Viper Underground.
So moved.
Second discussion, please. Go ahead, Mike.
I guess Kyle or Tony, either one. I mean, I guess Jerry Bornhof Construction's obviously a Wyoming company and I guess, to me, have we thought about, I mean, his bid may have been lacking all of the items that you requested him to give you, but I don't know if we can use just not supplying their certificate as, if that's, you know, if we can add the 5% just because of that.
Your Honor, to be compliant with our bid documents, staff reviews and ensures that the bids are responsive to those bid requirements. Therefore, we recommend based off of those bid requirements, all of the bidders received the same set of rules. All of them should comply by those same set of rules. Therefore, that's why we added it. The state statute does not require that it is supplied at the time of the bid opening. However, the contract documents and the bid documents supplied by the city of Riverton before the bid opening did require that.
Okay. So we asked specifically for the certificate?
Your Honor, that is correct. It's very clear in the bid document.
Okay. Kyle?
Do we have any past history with Viper Underground?
Your Honor, Councilman, yes, we do. They've acted as subcontractor on several projects and have also been general contractor on several of our projects.
Were they on the ones on Second Nor, Second West?
No, Your Honor, that was Dave's Asphalt Company.
No, Dave's Asphalt Company did the, did the top, but who did the sewer and the water lines there?
Your Honor, that was Viper Underground.
So we do have a past history with those and they have been acceptable.
Yes, Your Honor, they have been.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Sean.
Where is Viper, where are they based out of? Where are they from?
Your Honor, they're a Riverton company as well.
They are Riverton?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I just thought that was one of the things that when we were, when we had the 1% on the ballot, that was one of the things that was used quite highly is that we kept almost, I think it was 90% of the fork funds stayed in the city of Riverton, which is a nice, not only is it garnered from right here in Riverton, but it stays in Riverton because we pay local companies. So that was my question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor vote signed, the motion passes. The next item is the fiscal year 2019 city council goals. Could we get the city administrative report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution number 1366 in regard to fiscal year 2019 city goals is before you. Council met on two separate occasions and work sessions over the last month in order to develop these goals. During the first session, there was kind of the brainstorming session of it going through recommendations from staff. Staff then took those doc, those items, brought back a list. Those, that list was then again analyzed by council at the next work session with staff involvement. The, the product of those two meetings is before you today for your consideration. It is, it is recommended to be approved as provided. A couple of the items that will change with the adoption of your goals as denoted in the discussion portion of the staff report is that each of the staff reports here forward, as you can see in 1367, will reference the goals as they're, as they're provided or approved. That will allow us to keep a tally and will allow us to discuss how those, how those different activities in the future relate to the goals. The intent is to keep our mind on the goals and to make sure that we're not letting those slip by. It will, we would also provide a tally sheet on an ongoing basis, either monthly or quarterly, that would provide for your review, just so you can see that we're not just focusing on one item or another and not letting items slide by the wayside. Without going through each and every goal, as council has reviewed these, has already reviewed these at this time, I would complete, I would complete my report and ask if council has any questions of me.
Jim?
On the one goal, it's to enhance city image and beautification, but right below it, it's research, community-wide internet. I was thinking that we were thinking Wi-Fi. Is that one and the same?
Your Honor, Councilman, yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, would the city clerk please read Resolution 1367 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Resolution number 1366, a resolution of the governing body of the city of Riverton establishing goals and objectives for fiscal year 2019 to promote the long-term welfare and success of the city of Riverton.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 1366.
Your Honor, I make a recommendation, we approve Resolution number 1366.
Second. As your discussion. Jim?
Your Honor, I, I'm trying to remember from last year, I mean, even when we look at our Riverton City Council goals 2017, I think this would be the first one where we would be referring to it as a fiscal year as opposed to just a calendar year. And I just wanted to, I, I know we had discussed that a little bit in terms of wanting to tie it in more directly with the budget, but I just wanted to be sure we were all on board still with the idea of calling this the fiscal year 2019 goals as opposed to 2018.
Looks like we jumped to, jumped 2018, right?
It kind of looks like that when you just look at the years.
If I may, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Generally, when referring to a fiscal year, it's, you started in eight, you started in one year and we ended in the next. We all, we've seen that. So we can modify that to say 18 and 19 goals if it's council's preference without any difficulty, but we would link this to the fiscal year, to the actual fiscal year for reporting.
And, and I think it makes sense to do it that way. That was part of the discussion we had is that it doesn't make sense to have goals that, we even pushed it back a little bit more than we have in the past because it doesn't make sense to have goals January to January, but then fiscal year runs July or whatever. But I, I guess I just wanted to make sure that we were clear that that's what we wanted to do and, and I guess make sure for public information as well, we're not just skipping 2018.
Taking a year off.
This is in the Senate.
Okay.
Your Honor, I get, I would, it just seems that we need to be clear that these goals begin immediately, even though fiscal year 19 doesn't start until July 1. I, I think that's a good clarification to make is that our intention is, is to start holding ourselves accountable to these goals now through fiscal year 19.
Mayor and council, if I may.
Go ahead.
I would, I would agree and I would only add to Councilman Godey's statement that probably within, if not the next meeting, then within the next two meetings, you'll see action items with, on a number of these goals. We've talked about redevelopment of the Solutions Committee. Some of those things that need to be moving sooner rather than later are going to be moving. We don't intend to wait on any of these.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor vote signed and the motion passes. I thought there was a, I thought our goals, our goal-setting sessions were really good and appreciated the help council worked hard on that and, and tried to get things put together so that we really had some things that we could focus on each for the coming year. Resolution 1367, Business Ready Community Grant Master Plan, city administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 1367 dealing with the BRC or Business Ready Community Grant is before you for consideration and is in regards to the development of a master plan, which is denoted within the council goals that you've just approved. Specifically, it is in regards to council goal number seven and is denoted in the staff report. I would point out first that this was an item that was brought to us by Kevin Kirschznik of Idea Inc. while we were at WHAM. I did receive a call and it was something that he had identified due to our conversations about economic development goals and the work that Idea Inc. is doing. As such, he took it upon himself, identified this and had the, had the conversations beforehand and was able to bring this forward and is largely responsible for this grant and the writing and development of it. And so to that, we would extend our appreciation to him for his hard work and he is in the audience today if you have questions of him. However, the BRC grant can be used for economic development plans. The master plan does contain economic development items directly and indirectly. So items that are associated with economic development such as parks, transportation corridors and the like are all parts of a master plan. And as such, we believe it qualifies for this funding. If funded, it would be for 50,000, it would be for up to $50,000 with the 25% match. I would also denote that Idea Inc. voted to provide $10,000 towards that match. As denoted in staff memo, the overall cost would range between about $55,000 and anywhere up to $120,000 depending on the scope of work. If approved, we would continue as denoted, moving forward sooner rather than later in scoping the project and beginning to get some, some quotes and go through a process. That way, we could plan to start. That way, we could plan to start, hopefully, immediately following the adoption of the new budget. That is all I have, thank you.
Good, thank you. Would the city clerk please read Resolution 1367 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, Resolution Number 1367, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, to submit an application for a business-ready community grant to the Wyoming Business Council for the purpose of funding the redevelopment of the city of Riverton master plan and strategic plan for economic development.
Thank you. The chairman entertained a motion to approve Resolution 1367.
Your Honor, I move we approve Resolution Number 1367.
Second.
Moving to second and discussion. Go ahead, Sean.
It's not so much discussion, it's just a thank you. We were, we were down in WHAM and we were kind of having a rough afternoon with the, with the House bill that we were struggling with, and Tony came and said, hey, I got some good news finally, and we thought we'd heard some good news about the bill, but it was about this. So, huge shout out to Kevin and his group over there, there, ever since I've been on the council, he's always had his best foot forward for the city of Riverton, so it's appreciated what you do out there for us, sir, to try to help us be a little bit better for the community.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Resolution 1368, Amendment to Airport Improvement Project, AIP Grant, Public Works Directors' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Coming before you is kind of a carry-on to the discussion we had last December regarding our grants supporting an upcoming airport project, which is the general aviation reconstruction. We received very good news last week from FAA that we are receiving a special appropriation of entitlement funds. As you remember, our entitlement funds are tied to our level of enplanements. The magic number is 10,000. At the 10,000 threshold, the airport qualifies for $1 million of entitlement funds. We have not reached that 10,000 threshold in several years, and due to some help from our representatives in Washington, we were granted a special appropriation for fiscal year 17. That was what was enabling us to move forward with the general aviation project. We heard last week that this special appropriation was continued into fiscal year 18. Upon receipt of the news, we thought we'd scramble and amend our grants. Our idea is to construct the general aviation apron in one phase rather than two phases. That was our original plan, based off of the level of funding we had at the time of the application. As you noticed in your staff report, we are getting a considerable bang for our buck, for lack of a better term, with these entitlement dollars that are specially appropriated to our airport. The total cost of the project for federal improvements would be 1.9 million dollars and change. That is an increase from the $1 million that was originally applied for. We do have a state and local-only matching grant as part of this project because some of the general aviation apron does not fall within the bounds of federal funding. So, what we're looking to do is increase our application amounts for AIP 45, ARIW 32B, and ARIW 32C. We'll stand for questions at this time.
Thank you. The city clerk, please read Resolution 1368 by title only.
Yes, Your Honor, Resolution Number 1368, a resolution of the governing body of the city of Riverton, supporting the amendment of its previous application of Airport Improvement Program Grant Number 3-56-0024-045 from the Federal Aviation Administration, and ARIW 32B and ARIW 32C from the Aeronautics Division of the, of the Wyoming Department of Transportation.
The chairman entertained a motion to approve Resolution 1368.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve Resolution Number 1368.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on this resolution? So, I'm, I'm not, can you go back over the figures again?
Yes, Your Honor.
We're gonna, yeah, so, so we were gonna do it in two phases, and now we're gonna do it all at the same time, and that should save us money due to mobilization costs, but it sounded to me like it was gonna cost us more money. I might've got that twisted up in my head.
Your Honor, thank you. I would definitely go through and clarify that.
Okay.
The total project amount, when we consider what would have occurred in two complete fiscal years, will decrease because of what you highlighted, the mobilization costs.
Okay.
However, the cost change for Phase 1 of the project will increase because we're increasing the scope. Instead of doing half the project, we're doing the entire project, and that's what I was referencing as far as the increase in costs. For the grant application, what we're looking at is a 20,000 increase in local matching funds. These funds would have been required to complete the project in another fiscal year, we're just doing it in one fiscal year. I do want to highlight, as you look at your staff report, that the percentage change between the previous grant applications and the current grant application fluctuate. They're not a one-to-one change, and there's a reason for that. When we applied for our grants the first go-round, we were at a 90%, 6%, and 4% match that has improved. We're at a 93.75% match from the federal government now, a 3.75% match from the state government, and a 2.5% match from our local side. So, again, we're getting a great bang for our buck because our percentage of matching dollars actually decreased, even though for the first year of the project, the cost will increase because we're increasing that scope.
Got it, understand it. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. We are now to council committee reports and council members' roundtable. Mr. Godey, have you got anything for us this evening?
I do have a couple things. Just kind of wanted to announce, I did attend tonight the CWC Pro-Tech Open House, which houses the CWC's auto welding and new cosmetology programs. I'm not sure if any of the council have been able to make it up for any of those programs, but all, auto and welding expanded about four years ago, cosmetology is brand-new this fall, and they have some excellent programs up there, great space. If you haven't had a chance to go up, you really should. Second, I will be attending, as I believe, I believe, the mayor and councilman Bailey are as well, a community summit on March 21st. I know you guys were invited to engage in a CWC project to explore current and future economic and community challenges, workforce needs, and ways to collaborate on a variety of projects that the college is working on. I know one of those was the Ag and Animal Science Center, but there are several others, and they're kind of bringing the entire community together to kind of discuss all of those projects, so I'm kind of definitely looking forward to that. I know Sean can probably give a little bit more detail about this when it comes around to him, but I attended the rec board in filling in for Holly last night and had some additional proposals that we reviewed, but I'll let Sean tell you a little bit more about that, and I think that's probably it.
Okay, so, on the 21st, this community forum is, is just from 11:30 to 12:30? Is that what you've got, or?
Yes, 11:30 to, 11:30 to 1:30.
Oh, 11:30 to 1:30, okay.
Yes.
All right. I do plan, I do plan to attend that.
Great.
Yes, so, Mr. Tolsted and I had the opportunity to participate in the Men Who Cook annual event that's put on. The idea is to have funds that will go from that to a, the Dolly Parton, Dolly Parton Imagination Library. We had the chance to show off some impressive cooking skills from Mr. Tolsted, and I just kind of wandered along. We, we were outdone, however, by Mike Yow, which was tremendously disappointing to lose to an insurance guy. But then, so anyway, they had two different ways that the public were able to be involved in kind of rating or deciding the premium appetizers to eat and that kind of thing, and then I was glad to say that in terms of the people's choice tickets, we got third for our dish, so was a very good time for a very good cause, and I just wanted to mention that. It was a great event, and I think we had quite a few members of the city council there as well. So, anyway, good opportunity with that, so. I also wanted to note, we had discussed a little bit in the goal-setting, the idea of putting on to the items when they're brought up on the agenda, the council goal that it will fall under, and I noticed that we had that for the, for the grant, had the council goal that that was under in terms of the, the grant with Idea Inc. and everything, and just wanted to say, I, I really enjoyed that, and it was a good addition that I think will help the public, as well as us, be able to get a better idea of where this is gonna fall within the goals for the fiscal year. So, thank you for adding that in there. That's all I have.
Good, thank you. I understand that that, Men, Men Who Cook raised $16,000 for the cause, so that's pretty good. Somebody bid $225 on a chocolate cake and then gave it back, and they auctioned it again, and somebody else got it for 185, and I think they cut it up into little pieces and everybody got a chunk.
I didn't get any of that.
Yeah, you were, must not have been paying attention.
Aw, man. Left you tuned.
That's the diet version of cake, if you buy it and then give it back.
Yeah.
I've wanted a $50 piece of cake. Could have been nice.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Again, I had the pleasure to attend the airport board meeting, as, and as Kyle sort of outlined tonight, things have been really looking up. Denver Air Connections is doing a fantastic job for us, and the numbers are all increasing and looking very good. Revenues are up, bookings are up, so I mean, I think we're really making some really good headway up the airport, so I think congratulations goes out to the staff and all of the folks that have made that happen with Fast Committee and all of that, and again, it's, it's enjoyable to see all of the hard work that's gone into that, be productive and fruitful and, and bring Riverton some really good quality air service, and I've had the pleasure of flying on it many, many times myself, and I don't think they have any rivals in the industry, in my opinion, so they're top-notch, so. And then, also, of course, I've been gone over the last month because of the death of my daughter, and I thank you all for all of your kind wishes and cards and letters and donations and the amount of love and support we've got from this community has been just amazing. So, thank you. It, it does, you know, restore your faith in humanity when you see how many people come to the aid of people in need and, and all of that, and gives you a new appreciation of your loved ones, and make sure you give them all a hug.
Thanks, Mike. Kyle, anything for us tonight?
Yeah, I'm having a brain cramp. I attended a meeting at, and we, the main source of discussion was the Main Street Development. There's an organization that is funded by the state, what was the?
Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting.
Yeah, Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting, thank you. And there was a lady there that explained how they went in and developed plans for Main Street, Wyoming, and that's the name of the corporation. And being on Main Street with my office, I'm going yippee skippy, but the idea was not to develop and make Main Street Riverton, Wyoming, it was Main Street Riverton, the entire town. And it was very enlightening, I enjoyed it, and I think that I'm gonna go in there and ask more questions and bring a better report back to you. Second meeting I attended was the garbage meeting over in Lander, that's not the proper, but that's the short and sweet of it. They're operating in a profit and they're maintaining the, their goals, and part of our goal is to see if we can cut some fat from hauling our garbage and lining their pockets, but we're working on that. Thank you, that's the only thing I have.
Sean?
Thank you, Your Honor. Last night, we met as the rec board, as Lance noted earlier. We paid bills and we had four additional people come in, so I think we gave away another, granted another $40,000 last night is what it was, so we're up to just a little bit over $200,000 that we're giving back to community groups, primarily focused around helping use or promote something in the community, so it's always good to see those people come in and, and to do stuff like that. And as you know, it's always nice to give away somebody else's money, so that makes it a lot easier when you're doing that. And then, also, if I may, Your Honor, we have some visitors with us tonight, the local scout troop, I'm not sure what troop they are, but scouts always have a warm place in my heart, so I like to recognize those fine young, fine young men out there, y'all look sharp in your uniforms, so make sure you stick around afterward so we can thank you guys and shake your hands and stuff like that. And then, just a reminder that this week, our boys high school basketball team is heading up to Casper to compete in the state basketball 3A championship. They play Thursday night at, 7 o'clock is their first game, and I'm sure it'll be carried on one of the radio stations, so if you can't make it up to Casper this week, then support them, listen on the radio. Eric Polly does an amazing job representing our Wolverine teams out there wherever they play, so it should be a good time for those kids, they're gonna go and try to defend their state championship. And then, I did have the opportunity to go to the Men Who Cook. They, they were very impressive. I think I took three or four for the road on the way home, so they were good. So, that's all I have, Your Honor, thank you.
Good, thank you. City Administrator, you got anything for us tonight?
Oh, yes.
Holly?
Holly? I don't know if we still have.
Yep.
Are you there?
Yep.
You have anything to give us tonight?
Um, I don't, I just wanted to tell you guys thank you so much. I know I've been away a lot lately, I want to tell you guys thank you, especially to Lance for filling in for me. I'm sorry, I know that right now it just kind of seems crazy, but I should be back within the next, hopefully, month. I'll eventually get to come home, but just thank you so much for being patient and willing to work with me.
Okay, we, we miss you at those Finance Committee meetings, Holly. I, I think the meeting runs at least an extra 35 seconds longer, maybe.
So, who's setting the bar so high?
It's Tim.
We're gonna, we're, oh, yeah, of course, it would be Tim.
Getting lawyered up.
I guess that.
Yeah, he's dragging it out, he's dragging it out just a little bit.
Because he's an overachiever like that.
Okay.
But no, thank you so much. One minute flat.
Meetings have been one minute flat generally.
All right.
You should come back, though, because I really do not do the best job at that, so.
Well, from, from the ones that I've watched on the website, you're doing an amazing job, so keep it up. But I will be coming back, and then I want my position back.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. We just, we just have an acting chairman of the committee for, for a while.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right.
All right, thank you, Holly.
Yep.
Okay, Tony, have you got anything for us tonight?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a handful of items. Kind of a heads up, in Mar- this next meeting... Kind of a heads-up, in this next meeting, the work session will be with Idea Inc. and we'll be addressing some of our economic development items. This is something that was talked about at length, during our work sessions. It's an opportunity for Idea Inc. to talk about what they have done and to hear input from council as to desires once and also just generally have a conversation. In April, work session is scheduled for personnel handbook and May, work session is scheduled for fiber discussion. We were doing some research on that now. The latter of the two, the latter two items on there could flip, but I don't think they will. I would let council know that Senate File 89, which is the 105 million direct distribution, is moving forward. It's past second reading. Senate File 40, which is air service, is also past second reading, however, it's close. That's with the capacity purchase agreement. I believe it's within two. So if anybody wants to reach out on that one, by all means, please do. That's important. We file, as discussed previously, we followed House Bill 13 and 14 with regard to extraterritorial. It is looking like while both still exist, Senate File 14, as modified, is picking up speed and is, I believe, through second at this point. So that is much more desirable from a city standpoint than House Bill 13 was. Of course, the WHAM website will provide all the information and markups for our time. I would remind council that the force meeting is on the 12th at 11:00 a.m. And I would let council know that we did have a bid opening for the big Wyoming subdivision improvement, concrete and asphalt work. Current, the... I'm sorry, the current report, current bidder estimate does have it coming in under budget. We'll finalize that and have that presented to you at the next available meeting for your award. And the airport board meeting is not this Friday, but next Friday, just as a reminder. And finally, just a couple items. I did want to say again, a great big thanks to Kevin Kirschznik for his work on this grant. That is a great help to us. Thank you very much, Kevin. I would also like to draw attention to the work that our public works director, Kyle Butterfield, in the FAST Group has done with regard to the DAC contract, with regard to air service in our community. As somebody who's relatively new to this process, I can tell you that the amount of work and the level of professionalism and dedication has been impressive. So to staff and everybody involved, thank you very much. And again, thank you for your time setting our goals. I do appreciate that. It does help us move forward and we look forward to implementing those. Your Honor, I have nothing else. I'd stand for any questions.
Good, thank you. The only comments that I have are pertaining to the Denver Air Connections agreement that we have. I'm excited to sign that and get that moving so that we can start selling fares after the 1st of July. And I hope that it'll turn out to be a catalyst for their movement forward for some interline agreements for next year so that instead of having to go directly to their site to buy tickets, you'll be able to do it on the Internet, Expedia and so forth. And so people who want to get to Riverton, Wyoming, it'll show up on those travel sites and they'll be able to buy their tickets without any difficulty. And we'll be able to buy a ticket from Riverton straight through to wherever you're going, Orlando, Florida, or Key West, or New York City, or wherever you happen to be headed. And your bag will make it there with you. So I think that'll be a huge difference in the number of people who are wanting to get on that plane and that'll make us all better off. So I look forward to that day and I hope that this contract will get us moving in that direction. Glad to have the Boy Scouts here with us. And the troop number is...
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
Forty-four, okay. All right. And Lutheran Church, right? No. United Methodist Church, okay. Good, all right. Okay, so we don't have an executive session and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night, Holly.
Good night, Holly.
Good night, guys.
You bet. You bet. You can stage it any way you want to, Ernie.
Thank you. I kind of stumbled through this one.
No, you're so... We'll stand up and that way that'll... Yeah. Okay, we'll stand up.
Some of these guys may have to kneel so they don't see us.
Scouts there.
An all-star right here, man.
Hey, Ernie, have you met Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, let's get the little skirt kid right here. What's your name? Daniel, why don't you move right up here? All right, so we can see your face. Like the family reunion. And you can move over just a little tiny bit. Perfect, right there. Okay? And you can move over just a little bit there. All right, great. Now, does everyone dip your hat up just a little bit so we can see your eyes? Okay? All right. We only want eyes in this chamber. We don't want nays. That was a joke. Bad one. Everyone get their pictures? Okay, you can come over here and get a really nice shot of them in front. Thanks for a good picture. Great. Thanks, guys. Good to see you.
It's nice to meet you. Stop in and see us.
Any guys around?